The views and opinions expressed on this program are those of the participants and do not reflect the views of Bronx Net or the program underwriters.
Bronx Net. Your voice, your views, your vision.
All right, to get started, it's a New York City Democratic, excuse me, New York City Council Democratic debate here for District 13. The first candidate I'd like to introduce is Ms. Cheryl Keeling. She is of Riverdale. Please, everyone. Our next candidate is Clifford Stanton. He is of Van Cortlandt Park Village. And our final opponent is Andrew Cohen of Riverdale. Please. Have a seat, everyone.
Come on, Theo.
Hi, I'm Ruben Diaz Jr. I'm not just the Bronx Borough President, but I'm a father and an uncle. I can't emphasize enough how important it is for men and fathers to be a part of their children's lives. Let me talk to you about a program that's come out of my office, the Bronx Fathers Taking Action Committee, which is a committee of Bronx fathers and men formed to help uplift the institution of fatherhood while responsibly respecting the privilege of being a dad. Our mission statement is to engage, empower, educate, and encourage fathers, grandfathers, and uncles of all ages by providing them with the resources and help that they need in order to build new relationships with the leaders in our community. Ultimately, this initiative will help reinforce Bronx men as positive role models. So, I just want to take the time out to encourage fathers, grandfathers, uncles, men of all corners of the Bronx, to take an important role in the lives of the children in your families and in our communities, and also to get involved in this uplifting committee.
Good job, Theo.
Thank you.
Let's start it again, Theo.
All right.
Your education is the key to your future. And if you're a high school student, your next stop is college. A college education gives high school graduates a competitive advantage professionally and financially. Without it, your job opportunities are much more limited. A college diploma is a necessary requirement for any successful tomorrow. So make sure you're prepared. Speak to your guidance counselor. Visit your local colleges. Your education is the key to your future.
The first part of the debate will be between the moderator and the candidates. They have two minutes to answer their questions. And then, after that, we will have answers from the audience, questions from the audience who they'll answer. And we will now start off first with introducing each candidate. I'm going to start off with Mr. Cohen. You have three minutes. Please, tell us who you are.
Excellent. Good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to say thank you to Lehman College for hosting us this evening. Thank you to Michael for, I know you put in a lot of work organizing this event. And thank you to everybody who came out tonight to take time out of their busy schedule to learn more about the city council race. I appreciate it. My name is Andrew Cohen, and I'm a candidate for city council here in the 11th Council District. I'm a lifelong New Yorker and a longtime resident of the Northwest Bronx. I am a proud graduate of New York City Public Schools and a graduate of the State University I am first and foremost a husband and father, and I'm joined here tonight by my wife Heather. We have an awesome daughter, Sarah. I'm an attorney. I'm an adjunct professor at a sister CUNY school at John J. College Criminal Justice. And I'm a community board member. Why am I running for city council? The 11th Council District is an incredibly diverse district. It's made up of many vibrant, strong communities, and we need a council member who can bring people together and build coalitions to make sure we get our fair share of city resources and funding. And that is why I am particularly proud to have the endorsement of virtually every elected official and every single labor union that has made an endorsement in this race. If I'm elected to the city council, I will be a full-time council member. My only job will be to work for you and our communities. I'm going to start a rapid constituent response program where I'll work with community members to identify problems, large and small, and work to resolve them quickly. I'm going to have a participatory budgeting program, which will give you a direct voice in how city council funds are spent in our district. I'm going to fight for smaller class size, a pre-K seat for every child in the district, safer streets, cleaner parks, and funding for our senior centers and senior programs. New York City is the best city in the world. I know with your help, we can make our corner of it better, and that's why I'm asking for your support in the September 10 Democratic primary. I'm Andrew Cohen, and I'm a candidate for city council. Thank you.
Megan, you're a tramp. Ryan Fitch told me you guys made out. Everybody knows. He says you're most desperate girl he knows, besides your mom. How many boyfriends does she have, anyway? Lots? That zit is huge. Zip face. Ugly.
Gotta get that. Well, we must be careful. Well, that's an average.
Come on, Anna.
Okay.
Foreclosure doesn't affect just you. It affects your whole family, too. If you've fallen behind on your mortgage, we can help. Call 1-888-995-HOPE, because nothing is worse than doing nothing.
Oh, sir, sir, you're welcome. Thank you. Thank you.
Brandon.
Excuse me. What time are you guys leaving? We're going to rob your house tonight.
Don't come closer. I have rabies. Don't you wish there were warnings to protect you from life's risks? With diabetes, there is one. It's called A1C, a simple blood test that helps measure your risk of a heart attack and other complications. Learn more at diabetesA1C.org.
Good evening. I'm Shelley Keeling. Cheryl Keeling, my friends call me Shelley. I am running for the council seat here in the 11th District. The 11th District is probably the most economically and ethnically diverse, geographically, culturally diverse district of all of the districts in the Bronx. For that reason, it is necessary to have a candidate who can understand each and every community. I'm running on a platform of affordable housing, education, an affordable living wage, and protection for seniors. Every candidate and politician that you ever hear from will say the same things. So what is going to make me different? When I walked out of my public housing, the St. Nicholas Projects, 55, almost 56 years ago, to go to my public school down the block, politicians and candidates were offering smaller class sizes and better education. 56 years later, we still have 30 or more children in the classrooms, and the education system has not improved greatly. So I want you to be able to judge me. I want you to judge me not only on what I say. I want you to judge me on what I've done, not because I was looking for your vote or for a paycheck. I want you to judge me based on what I've already done in the community. When I speak of education, I'm speaking of education from the standpoint of bringing art, music, dance, and competitive physical education back into the schools as after-school programs. Have I done that already? Yes, I have. I did it in PS 81 in Riverdale. I did it in a small school on 175th Street and Bathgate Avenue. I did it in another school, 176, that's Jerome Avenue and 176th Street. I've done this already. I did it because the need was there, and I answered that need. I'm from a school of see something, do something. Don't just sit there and don't just say something. It's just not enough. I am a businesswoman. I spent 34 years buying property, being a landlord, holding it, selling it. When it was time for a person, when, okay, I'm getting the time. Okay, so when it, I took that time as a businesswoman, when people did not have money, when they had lost their jobs, I had a forgiveness program. So I want you to be able to judge me. I want you to hire a person with experience when you go, when, for a job, they look for experience. I have experience. I will continue to do what I've been doing, but I will want your vote to do it so I can do it better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Keeling. Appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Stanton.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, Michael. Thank you to Lehman College. I heard a rumor that they're scalping tickets to this for $100 outside. Is that true? My name is Cliff Stanton. I'm a candidate for city council. I am a Democrat. I'm a local kid. I grew up in Van Cortlandt Village on the other side of the reservoir. This, the Northwest Bronx is a part of who I am. I learned how to ride a bicycle in Ford Independence Park. I learned my ABCs at PS 95. I played ball at Harris Park Field, on the same field where I coached my Little League son, my son, to a Little League championship. I went to the Bronx High School of Science, where the eldest of my three children now attends, and I earned a business degree from the University of Michigan. After school, I became chief of staff for a New York City councilman, and today I am a successful small business owner. I, my experience in business, as a parent leader in our local schools, as a member of our local development corp, as a community activist, and even as a Little League coach, have prepared me for a life of public service and primed me to assume a leadership role in this community, which I think I've already done. It's time for change in this community. If you think about it, we've got so much going for us. We've got some of the most educated and energetic residents. We've got some of the most caring social support organizations. We've got incredible natural beauty, but too often we are held back because of a political establishment and culture that has too often promoted cynicism, pettiness, and divisiveness. We need better. We deserve better. I'm often asked on the campaign trail, "Why do you want, Ms. Sugano, why do you want to do this?" I think the best response I've ever given was to my seven-year-old daughter when I told her, "I just want to do something good for our neighbors and improve the lives of our residents." And I've done exactly that. I recruited a charter middle school to our community, which opens its doors last September with 132 schoolchildren. I started a volunteer transportation corps for seniors called Four Wheels for Good. On Tuesdays and Thursdays, we'll take seniors anywhere they want to go. Some of them are in this room right now. We haven't lost anybody yet. I am, I have developed proposals that would create a more dynamic environment for business. And I have led a four-year fight to create traffic calming measures that have made our streets safer. We have a lot left to do, and I'm sure that we're going to get around to it today, but I want to leave you with this. We have it within ourselves to create a community that sets a new standard for creativity, innovation, and service. All we need is a little courage and the right leadership. Leadership that can articulate a vision for this community, leadership that can challenge us to reach higher, leadership that can get us to work together to get things done. We need leaders who can, who can be strong, stand for their principles, and we need people who, we need leaders who are, who will, who will be strong, and we need leaders who will, who are answerable to no special interest, no political patron. They are only answerable to you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton.
My name is Cliff Stanton. I'm running for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, everyone, so you heard who the candidates are. We're going to go ahead and get into questioning. I'm going to start off with Ms. Keeling. Ms. Keeling, Mayor Bloomberg said that the stop and frisk affected just as many whites as it did minorities. How do you feel about that? Not to start off with that, but it kind of did blow me away when I saw the, the, all of the statistics. It was nowhere near. So what is he talking about?
First of all, he's incorrect. Second of all, maybe it was in a dream, but stop and frisk, it is well-known that stop and frisk, it targets and affects black and Latina males more than any other people. The problem with the stop and frisk is that less than 1% of those stopped and frisked will end in any type of a conviction for what they were stopped and frisked for. As parents, the call you never want to get is, "Mom, I'm locked up." You don't want to hear this. The fact that children and adults can be stopped and frisked because it is a mandate by the city, I think, is unfortunate. I think that there are other ways to accomplish what stop and frisk was intended to accomplish. The rules are already there. The laws are there. That if you see some, something suspicious, you have the right to stop. If beyond that, you see more, then you have probable cause to frisk. Those rules are already in place. They are the laws of the state of New York. We do not need a mayor who can't come and gives us a mandatory $700,000 stop and frisk for what he thinks and calls safety reasons.
Your education is the key to your future. And if you're a high school student, your next stop is college. A college education gives high school graduates a competitive advantage professionally and financially. Without it, your job opportunities are much more limited. A college diploma is a necessary requirement for any successful tomorrow. So make sure you're prepared. Speak to your guidance counselor. Visit your local colleges. Your education is the key to your future.
The average text takes your eyes off the road for nearly five seconds.
You didn't give up on sex. Don't give up on birth control either. There are more methods than you think. Find yours at bedsider.org.
Low-fat cheese sandwiches on whole wheat bread. Chewy and good for you. Snacks high in calcium help build strong bones, and foods rich in fiber are good for your heart, so you have the power to dominate. Can your food do that? Run, throw, think, eat better. Find out more at smallstep.gov.
How about you, Mr. Cohen? Say you're walking down the street in your neighborhood, you got your hoodie on, just came from a basketball game or some sports, or something worked out, and you were just stopped like that. How would you feel?
Well, first, let me say, like I said, I grew up in this city, and I know how much safer it is today than it was when I was growing up. I was, before I started my own law practice, I was a law secretary in Bronx Supreme Court. And on occasion, we would be assigned to do criminal arraignments. And I saw how many of our young people were being run through the system, spending 24 hours in jail for the possession of a single marijuana cigarette. Law enforcement should not be targeting our young people. As I think most people in this room know, there's currently a federal trial going on, and I believe that stop and frisk will be found to be unconstitutional. Last year, we stopped, New York City stopped 700,000 young people, and that there's no way that there is probable cause to do that, so.
Okay. Excellent. Mr. Stanton, what would you do to be able to maybe get with the police? What policies would you come up with in this district to help the different precincts have better relations with the young people today?
Well, you know, look, I'm, stop and frisk, Michael. You know, the stop and frisk is as old as there is crime. It's as old as there have been police departments. It has become a part of our lexicon in recent years with good reason, because what perhaps started out as possibly a valuable law enforcement tool has become completely abused by this administration, and it obviously needs to be completely revamped. I had a personal incident recently, which brought this into focus for me. I was driving in my neighborhood, a block from my home. There was a squad car there, and as soon as I came to the stop, or as soon as I passed the stop, the lights went on, and I thought, "Oh, my goodness, did I not stop long enough?" No. I was given a summons for being on my cellphone. I have hands-free. It was the first time in my life I had ever been wrongfully accused of anything. I was opposed to stop and frisk before this incident. The indignation I felt, the injustice that I felt over a simple traffic stop, I can only imagine, no, excuse me, I can't even begin to imagine what it must be like to be stopped within blocks of your house after a full day of work, right in front of your neighbors, and to be humiliated in that fashion. Think about what this is doing to our society. It's, it really is a humiliation. It doesn't, the statistics prove that it doesn't work, and it needs to be changed.
All righty. What would you change it, Ms. Keeling?
I would first...
By all means, keep it, keep it in your hand.
Yes, okay.
It's okay, keep it in your hand. Make yourself comfortable.
I would first get a new mayor. I would, at second, get a new chief of police. Kelly would not be on the, would not be in his position. And then I would ask for a public outcry. This is what we need. I came from an age where we protested. Protest is an act of love. It is an act of faith. It shows that you believe that there is better, that something else can happen. I went to college in 1969. At that time, it was Roe versus Wade. It was the Vietnam War. It was the Black Panther Party and the Black Revolution. It was Stonewall. But it was also a time that both Jew and Gentile, black and white, no matter what, what your values were and what your religion was, it did not matter. Everyone came together, and we protested. And this, we need this public outcry again. We have become much too complacent, and we need to let our elected officials know that we are in charge. They are there to serve us. I will be here to serve you. You tell me what it is you don't like. We have to get it changed. But this, what has happened, it's criminal. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of the, a lot of the concerns, we're going to go jump in environmental, but we're not going to be talking about walking paths and asphalt and stuff. We're talking about cleanliness of neighborhoods, teaching people to be aware, to clean up after themselves after a function in a park. I live in Oval, in Oval Park area, and I love the place. I've actually grown to love this borough after like 14, 15 years, and I really have taken pride in where I live now. And after, every Monday morning, I run and do my little jog around the track, and it is a mess in there. It is crazy. Mr. Cohen, what can you do to get the awareness, awareness out, to get these people to understand it got to keep their neighborhoods cleaner than what they're doing now?
Well, I have been campaigning over every corner of the district, and I will tell you one thing that I will do on day one. We need more garbage cans. There are not enough garbage cans in this district. They've removed them. I was campaigning at the Broadway and 238th subway, and they've removed all the garbage, the garbage cans from the station, under the theory that maybe the garbage will evaporate. We, that a simple thing of having a place to put the garbage will go a long way to making the district cleaner. And I hear this concern, like I said, from corner to corner in the district. The cleanliness of the district is paramount important to my constituents, and it's something that I'm going to take very seriously if I'm elected.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Ms. Keeling.
Garbage cans.
Same thing, huh?
Same thing, yes.
Well, what is it? I mean, why would they take away the garbage cans when it really helps?
I'll tell you exactly why.
Is it too much for them to go to each garbage can and empty it?
I went to a town hall meeting in, at the Methodist Church on 228th Street. It's right, it is one block outside of my district, but I went anyway. And the, the position of the sanitation department was that people put, bring their household garbage and put it in the garbage cans. So they remove the garbage cans. That's perfect logic. So the question is, why don't we just have more garbage cans or provide a, a place for people to put their household garbage if they don't want to put it in the incinerators, which I would not know why that is? But we definitely need more garbage cans. There will be four corners in a set of projects, and not one single corner has a garbage can. And so it's just, you're just asking for a neighborhood that is full of litter if, absent those cans.
Mr. Stanton, you think you can come up with a policy with the City of Sanitation Department of Sanitation?
How about this? I'll put garbage cans in third place behind personal responsibility and respect. How's that?
That, that's pretty good. I like that.
I, garbage cans aren't going to do much good if we don't teach our kids, and if our kids don't teach us some little bit of personal responsibility and how to have respect for our community and to take care of it like it's our own living room. Look, garbage cans would obviously be nice, but I think too often in the city, we, we look to government for solutions that people already out there are doing better than government ever could. I think about people like Elizabeth Quaranta in Norwood, who has started Friends of Mashaloo Parkway, and she has set an example for all of us on how to take ownership of your own community and to take pride in it and to make it, make it something that, that it's impossible to disrespect. And I just think, again, that sometimes we're looking the wrong places. This is not a solution for government. We already, as people, as individuals, know how to do what we need to do to make our communities beautiful. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. I know a lot of those responsibilities can be brought on us. I was walking the streets yesterday with my daughter, accidentally, my little girl, six-year-old Sophie, and I dropped a little piece of paper and was going to leave it there. Yeah, I didn't want to bend over.
Mike, oh, you know better than that.
She's like, "Do not litter. Daddy, pick it up." So actually, it's working very well. Working very well. I've even cleaned up my foul mouth to a certain degree. Now, education, yeah, what, 50 years now they've been talking about classes and small this and small that?
Actually, my, my mother's 98, and she had more than 30 in her class, too.
Oh, yeah.
So it's been like, more like 91 years.
Her mama ran the 100-mile dash, like, what, when she was 90, right?
97.
97, yeah. She, she just forget it. She's awesome, but we'll talk about her later. But what I want to know is, education. What is your, there have been a lot of issues between public schools, charter schools, Montessori, all this nonsense, and really what all the parents want is just a place to have their kids get great education. What is, what is this issue between charter schools and public schools, Ms. Keeling? Do you know?
The issue is that charter schools will come into a community where... The issue is that charter schools will come into a community where there are, where public schools exist, and the public school is in disarray. There's 1,200 children with one football in the whole school. And I'm saying that because I am a New York City certified public school teacher. I became one just two years ago when I attempted to take a phys ed program into the public schools. There is, there, there's a program in place for charter schools that will make it more simple for the charter schools to get and have the things that they need. I think that we should first take care of our public schools. Charter schools, there's a place for charter schools. But perhaps charter schools should be there for what our public schools cannot or does not, do not presently provide. So if, for instance, you wanted a specialty school for art or for dance or for gifted children, I think charter schools can serve that purpose. I think they can serve the purpose of providing a good education. But the public schools, they're public, and this is where the children go. And I think that this is the first place that we should take care of, and parents should not have to choose between either taking their child out of the neighborhood and getting a good education, nor should they have to choose between breaking their credit score by sending them to a private school and a good public education.
Thank you, Ms. Keeling. Mr. Cohen, what is your view of how the public schools are being administered today?
Well, first, let me say, like I said, I am an adjunct professor at an institution very similar to this, John Jay College. And I meet a lot of graduates from New York City public schools. And they come unprepared for college. We need to do more. Charter schools are a very, very small piece of the puzzle. There's over 1.1 million children going to public schools, traditional public schools every day in our city. And as I meet with parents and students, they feel disempowered. They feel that they don't have a voice. I'm going to be that voice. This is a very exciting time. We're gonna get a new mayor. We're gonna get a new speaker in the city council. And I'm gonna make sure that our parents and our students have a voice in how their schools are administered. Schools need to be appropriate to the community. They need to be responsive. And I'm gonna make sure that they are.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Stanton, how would you work with the new school chancellor? Say, this chancellor wants to keep the same policies that Bloomberg has, and which I understand a lot of people just don't agree with. How would you work with this person if they chose to keep the policies and still work with what Bloomberg left behind?
I'm gonna leave it to the mayor to work with his chancellor. I'm gonna talk to, hold the mayor's feet to the fire in terms of education. When we talk about this debate between charter schools and traditional public schools, let's remember a few things. Charter schools are public schools. I recruited one to our community, not because I'm particularly enamored with charter schools, but because I wanted to create additional options for the young families in our community. If you turn on the television, you can pick from any one of 1,000 channels. When it comes to picking a middle school or a general, an elementary school for your kid, more times than not, you're told, unless you've got the money for private school, you're told where you're gonna go. I have lived and breathed this stuff as a PA president at PS24. I wasn't in the door for more than a month when our first grade parents started asking us, what's next? So one of the motivations for me to run was a lack of confidence and faith in some of our, particularly our middle school options. I agree, we are not doing everything we can and should be doing to improve our existing schools, but I think it's imperative that parents are given options. I'm the only person at this table who has put money, funding into classrooms for enrichment purposes. I'm proud of that.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Thank you. All righty. Let's go a little into politics. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, I gotta ask you too, don't I?
No, no, no.
What'd you wanna ask? What'd you wanna say?
Okay. Because, Mr. Stanton, sometimes we do this as candidates. We say, I'm the only one who. And so, no, you're not the only one who. So we, I, there's probably not a public school teacher who has not put money out of her pocket into that classroom in one way or the other. It just happens, being a public school teacher, this, I tell you, is an act of love. I have done it since my son was four years old. He is now 32 years old. So, yes, we all do it because we want better for our children, and those, our children are the children of the entire community. And we need a mayor in place that is not closing, who has not closed, he has closed 140 schools. This is not what we need.
All righty.
Shelley point taken. My apologies.
Mr. Cohen, I know you put in some money. I know you did. Don't worry about it.
I would say, honestly, teaching for me is a money-losing process. I do really enjoy doing it.
That's all right. Let's get into politics a little bit. I had an interview with Ms. Keeling. She was my last interview. And we spoke about Lulus.
We spoke about Lulus.
Ms. Keeling was the only one to say, I'll accept a Lulu, and let me explain to you why. If they asked me to do more work, I would require more money because that more work would take more time. And I kinda agreed with that. That made sense. Why did you not come with that, Mr. Cohen?
Well, first of all, I'm going to do it all the time, full-time.
Okay.
And I believe that, I don't know if people in the audience know exactly what a Lulu is, but a Lulu is a stipend given out by the speaker of the city council for leadership. And it's one of the methods of control that the speaker uses to keep the members in line. And I'm not gonna be kept in line. I'm gonna do what's right every time, and I'm not gonna have the threat of a Lulu hanging over my head. I'm gonna be a full-time council member. I'm gonna work regardless of the pay for my constituents every day. Thank you.
Mr. Stanton?
So, you know, Lulus are, I can't say that word without laughing. Lulus are just a small part of the problem here. We've got a mess on our hands. If you've been reading the newspapers, you can be nothing but embarrassed and ashamed about the political landscape in the Bronx. Lulus is just one piece of the problem. We've got elected officials who, you know, the ones who haven't been indicted are not paying enough attention to their constituents and the needs of their community. And the ones who have been indicted, which are too many, are, you know, are just a scourge to the entire political landscape. So, look, we need reform. We need people who can do reform. I'm an independent voice. I'm not a product of a political machine. I'm not part of the political establishment. I think you can trust me to do, make the difficult decisions and make the difficult choices that will help clean up the mess that we've got in Bronx politics and citywide. We need, we need to start attracting people to this, to politics that, you know, are fresh and new, bring new ideas, and are not beholden to any special interests. I am not beholden to anybody except for you.
Thank you, Mr., thank you, Ms. Stanton. Appreciate it. Ms. Keeling?
I think that we should get pay for work. If you work longer hours, we expect extra, we expect more pay, for instance. Well, here's a funny thing, though, when you said you'd work full-time. I think what's required is like 17 and 1/2 hours, if I'm not mistaken. That's considered a full week in the city council. So if we are working longer hours, if we are putting in, for instance, the finance committee, if they need more expertise and more time, I'm all for a person getting paid for what they do. We have enough jobs out here where people are not getting paid for what they do, for every dollar a white man makes, a white woman makes 77 cents, a black woman makes 72 cents, and a Latina woman makes 62 cents. So when you, I'm really the wrong person to speak to about getting paid for work. Okay? So if we do more work at the city council, and there is a way to get paid for it, and that is legal, and you are not selling yourself out, because I will not be sold out, and then I think it's just fine.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ms. This is Jack Thomas. Today, someone almost brought Jack something to eat. Someone almost drove him to a shelter. And someone else almost brought him a warm blanket. And Jack Thomas, well, he almost made it through the night.
Don't sit there.
Tainted people are small.
Dad, do you wanna get the phone?
No.
Every year, 1 million families face losing their homes to foreclosure. If you're ignoring your mortgage issues, things will only get worse. Call 1-888-995-HOPE, because nothing is worse than doing nothing.
Gotta get that. Oh, it must be careful. Oh, that's an adventure.
Come on, Anna.
Okay.
Foreclosure doesn't affect just you. It affects your whole family, too. If you've fallen behind on your mortgage, we can help. Call 1-888-995-HOPE, because nothing is worse than doing nothing.
Hey. 不客气
Brandon!
I noticed that the state tests are, the children are taking more time taking state tests than actually learning the curriculum that they're supposed to learn each year. My 15-year-old is, that's all I've heard for three-quarters, state test, state test, state test. Hey, do you know algebra yet? No. What is going on with that? Can you tell me, Mr. Cohen? Why is, why are these kids so focused, why is the public schools so focused on these state tests?
Well, as everyone here knows, we have a billionaire businessman is the mayor of New York and who is much more interested in quantifying data than educating our children. There's so many policies implemented by this administration that seem to have failed. All these tests don't seem to demonstrate that our children are doing any better. And we need to stop teaching to the tests and start educating our children again. I think that there is, again, a real opportunity with the new administration coming in to make some real changes, and that's why this is such an important election.
All righty. Mr. Stanton, what can you do to help, you know, really get these curriculums, to have the, the public schools focus more on the curriculum as opposed to the state tests? What would you do?
State tests are, one of these things that unfortunately, I think, are, to some extent are necessary evil. However, we have lost, we've put third graders into classrooms where it's well-known before the school year begins that they're not gonna learn a whole lot, except for how to take that test. I think we need, you know, a fundamental rethinking of, from the ground up of our educational system here in the city. If you think about some of the countries in the, around the world that are most successful in teaching their children, places like Finland and Japan, they don't feed their teachers to the wolves. They, the best way to teach a young child is to be able to teach teachers how to do their craft better, and I think we're doing not enough of that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Keeling, I know you work in, you still work at the private school, right?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
And what is your, what is your take on that?
With regards to the public schools, because as you know, I am teaching at the public school as a substitute, and as I said, that happened two years ago, but 14 years ago, I went to the Fieldston School to coach track and tennis there. The Fieldston, the city schools and city school teachers, I think, are some of the absolutely most qualified teachers anywhere. After they finish their bachelor's, they have to do another 15 hours for their masters and then another 15 hours thereafter. So they are, they are very well-qualified, but they are not left to practice their craft. Fieldston, on the other hand, their position is, they do not give grades. Their position is, it's not about the testing, it's about the journey. It's about how you get there. I think they have a marvelous model. I would love to see that instituted where possible. I think it would be perhaps more difficult to put that model down in a public school, but it would be nice to be able to get some hybrid between what presently exists in the public school, that teaching to the test, and then a Fieldston-type model.
Excellent. Thank you. You know, the 30 minutes went by so quick. We're gonna start with you all, so we're gonna take a couple of minutes, let them freshen up, and we'll be right back, okay? Give us about 10 minutes, about five minutes, five minutes, five minutes? Is that good? Take a break?
I'm good.
Excellent.
Let's go.
All right, we'll take five minutes. We'll be right back. Everyone, just relax, and we'll be right with you.
My name's Brandon. In nine years, I'll be an alcoholic.
Hi, Brandon.
I'll start drinking with the older kids. And whatever they do, I'll do.
Kids who drink before age 15 are five times more likely to have alcohol problems when they're adults. So start talking before they start drinking.
I know I'll start with alcohol. I'm just not sure how it's gonna end.
These things we count on every day started as ideas. Ideas from the minds of African-Americans. Support minority education today so we don't miss out on the next big idea tomorrow. The United Negro College Fund, a mind is a terrible thing to waste.
Hey, how's it going?
Sir, are you okay?
What? How's this? It's probably nothing. I'm sure it'll go away.
Go away? But, sir, that can't be good.
No, it's cool, really.
Do you want a napkin or something?
Everything's fine. Thanks.
You wouldn't ignore this, so why ignore the signs of a stroke? At the first warning signs, call 911 immediately, because time lost is brain lost.
Every year, mothers lose their babies to gun crimes. You'll always be your mother's baby. So before you commit a gun crime, think about who you'll leave behind. Gun crimes hit home.
We're gonna first start off with Mr. Stanton. All righty. We're gonna start off with Mr. Stanton. Just raise your hands. We'll go in order as best we can. Since there's not that many people, I'll have the ushers walk to you. All righty? Senior citizens, enjoy, relax, come right to ya. Don't want no one to move. And the gentleman way up there, what is your question for Mr. Stanton?
My question for Mr. Stanton is, I've been a teacher in the system for well over 30 years, and I've heard what you've said about, that you started a charter school. And I'm not against charter schools, they have their place, but one of the things that really concerns me is how it's been forced upon the community in so many ways. I actually attended a protest in Harlem where you had parents fighting each other over collocations and situations where, where the charter school is getting so much, so many other things that the other schools aren't. So there's been a serious problem of charter schools coming in and taking up public school space and taking up the money and everything else that the public schools need. What, what do you, how would you like to correct this problem?
First of all, my hat's off to you, sir. 30 years in public education, we owe you a great deal. Thank you. Look, we've all, I've heard the same horror stories you have, and we get to watch it on, I forget the name of that documentary, but my experience with charter schools is limited to the Tech International Charter School, and I can tell you that this was a school that parent leaders in our community... this was a, a school that, um, parent leaders in our community wanted to bring to the community. Um, it went into its own building. Um, the problem that you're talking about with colocation, it, you know, it actually turns out that, uh, traditional, uh, public education schools are more often co-located than charter schools are. But, um, look, we're all fighting for resources. I think that, um, I, I don't accept the notion that charter schools take away, um, from traditional public schools, and I would maintain that the 132 students that went to Tech International actually, had that school not been in our community, we would have even more crowded classrooms in traditional, uh, general ed schools as we do right now. So I think there is a place for them all.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Next question, please.
Lady right here.
Silver, if you can stand up so the usher can come to you. And please make your question short and sweet. Thank you.
I'll try.
You got a, you got a, uh, what are, what are, essay books?
I'm cutting it down. About charter school and, um, the public school. To my knowledge, the charter, charter school are much smaller, appreciate that, but they have about, each charter school have a principal. I can't understand that. Each principal makes a lot of money. If you have five charter schools within that school, five different principals, when a regular school, public school, you only have one. So that's costing a lot of my money, retired, taxpaying money.
Mr. Stanton, you want to?
I'm Mr. Cohen.
I mean, Mr. Cohen.
That I'm sure.
See, it's his fault. Mr. Cohen, please. Respond.
Well, uh, first, I want to say, uh, uh, to our 30-year veteran of the public school system, uh, I, I'm a, I have enormous respect for teachers. Apparently, I have the ability to work with teachers. I've been endorsed by the United Federation of Teachers, um, and I've also been endorsed by the Principals and Administrators Union. Uh, I think that, uh, I think that charter schools, uh, perhaps have a place, again, a, a small place in our system. I'm open to the idea of experimenting in education. I think colocating charter schools, uh, in the same buildings as, uh, traditional public schools has been an abject failure. Uh, it, it creates resentment, uh, it creates a, a multi-tiered system of haves and have-nots, and it has not worked, and I will oppose, uh, colocation of charter schools in the same buildings as public schools. Uh, even collocating, thank you. Even collocating, uh, the mayor has an obsession with small schools. Uh, I, I think I, we would be better served by smaller class size. Uh, you have a great point about, uh, I don't know why Clinton needs three or four principals when it functioned with one principal for many, many years.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next question, please.
Can I, can I get in on that one?
If you want to get in on it, sure, get in on it.
A, a part of the problem, I believe, is that New York City is the only city that has the Board of Education centralized under the mayor. The, all of the other cities, they have, um, someone, he's shaking his head, no. But here's a problem. This city and this system is centralized under this mayor. That is problematic, and that is problematic because when this mayor makes decisions, this mayor, it, though, it's done. When, uh, it was a DeWitt Clinton school, when the mayor decided that this should be different, DeWitt Clinton is a high school that has produced, like, 11 Pulitzer Prize winners, five Olympic athletes, Charlie Rangel, um, James Baldwin. Why ever you would take something so perfect and make something so imperfect, I still don't get that. So I think that part of the problem is that we, the, uh, it is centralized and that local, um, politicians, local parents, they do not have enough input.
minibar's right over there. Phone if you need to use it. Bed? And what is that? Oh, that's a double chin. Ugh. The guy who checked out must have lost it, just snacking on fruits and vegetables. Have a good stay.
I'm a single mother of two kids. I work a lot. I come home tired. You do miss a lot. He dropped off for a whole month. Sometimes I would talk to him and he wouldn't even turn around and look at me. I would just get frustrated because in any way that I talked to him, it just doesn't go through his head. I didn't give up, because there's always hope that they'll snap out of it.
Give your team the boost they need to graduate. Call 1-877-4-A-KID or join us at boostup.org for tips and advice.
You know, when I was younger, man, my, my brother was the one who really took care of me, man.
Is that right?
Hey, he'd wake me up in the morning, get me ready for school, take a shower, have, make me some breakfast.
Where your brother at now?
Oh, he know. I rap. I get lonely, nobody to talk to. I felt like quitting school. He looked at my dad in my eye, he told me, if not for me, it's good for him.
Give Josh and our class of '08 the boost they need to graduate. Join us at boostup.org.
You know, when I was younger, man, my, my brother was the one who really took care of me, man.
Is that right?
Hey, he'd wake me up in the morning, get me ready for school, take a shower, have, make me some breakfast.
Where your brother at now?
Oh, he know. I rap. I get lonely, nobody to talk to. I felt like quitting school. He looked at my dad in my eye, he told me, if not for me, it's good for him.
Give Josh and our class of '08 the boost they need to graduate. Join us at boostup.org.
Next question, please. Who's next? Gentleman right here. And who are you making the question to?
All three of you.
Go for it.
My name is Robert. Thank you so much. Both of you, or at least three, spoke about diversity of this district. Would, I would love to see this, this house back on 40th and 50th.
Hey, brother, me too.
Question, um, the reform in Washington right now, the immigration reform, is affecting the whole country, and given the fact that this district is so diverse, what is your opinion on that, number one? Number two, how can you impact the education of the ESL students, as we know play a very important role? I would like you to answer on that. And lastly, the fact that we have Brown Science and, of course, the other specialized school, we have the stats that it does not bring so many kids from this community. What are you going to do to go to PS 20, 24, to all the local schools and say, hey, we're going to provide program so that we can bring the gap of Latino and Omenary to go to Brown Science? Thank you.
Okay, okay. I couldn't hear. You're going to go closer.
I'm going to let Mr. Stanton go first on this one.
I couldn't hear.
I swear. I know. I'm pointing to Mr. Stanton, Mr. Cohen.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Stanton.
Um, the Dream Act is, um, you know, something that, uh, an idea that's time is long overdue. Um, Bill, I don't know how you guys deal with it in Congress, uh, the frustration of, of, of having to, um, contend with, uh, the small minds that are on the right side of the aisle. My apologies to any Republicans in the House. But this is a truly diverse, uh, community. I think, um, part of, uh, what you're talking about is, is equity and fairness, and, um, there, I have encountered, uh, many people, especially in the Norwood, Mashle, Bedford Park sections of, of our district, that, uh, perhaps legitimately feel that, uh, resources have not been distributed evenly across this district and, um, that Riverdale rightfully or wrongfully is perceived to be, uh, a place that gets the lion's share of the resources. That's something that needs, whether it's true or not, it's, uh, something that needs to be corrected. I can guarantee you that when I raise my right hand to become the next city councilman, that, that, that's something that, um, people will understand very quickly, that, that, um, I believe in fairness across all areas of our district.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Ms. Keeling, would you like to respond?
Uh, I didn't hear the question completely, but I think you were asking about the Dream Act. Was that correct?
Okay. Okay, so those are a couple of questions. Um, I, okay, so, um, first, I'm running on a ticket with, um, Eric Salgado. Eric Salgado, he's the only Latina running on the Democratic line. He has, uh, an, a plan that he wants to issue from the city municipal identification cards so that, because as he says, the immigrants, they're here, non-documented people, they're here, and they're not going anywhere. So we need to have a way that they, uh, that the people that are not documented, that are living here, can live with dignity, that they can take their children to school with their heads up, that they can, uh, go and get housing, that they can buy cars, and et cetera. So I, that, I think that is the, we have to recognize them and accept that they are here and be able to, then, once that happens, when you integrate them into the system, then they will have the same opportunities as other children have. So I think, and we need to be more tolerant. We are not, we are insufficiently tolerant. For instance, I think it was our present councilperson who was the only councilperson to vote against the holidays for Muslim children. They asked for two holidays, the Muslim community did. We recognize Jewish holidays and Christian holidays. Come on, you know? So I think that we need to exercise more tolerance. I think that in the other districts that they, who, where the districts feel that Riverdale is getting more, um, of the, of the money and more of the time and more of the attention, you know what I say to you? Get out there and vote. Because if you permit Riverdale, which it does, Riverdale sends 15,000 people to the polls. The other three Assembly districts combined send 3,000. If that's the best you can do, that's the best you deserve. So I say, get yourself out there, September 10th, do better, and then let's make a difference. And then we can have ESL programs. This ELL program, the English Language Learners program, it is, it does not work as well as the English, as a second language program.
Thank you, Ms. Keeling.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, that is true. We were talking about that earlier. I was interviewed by Norwood Press, and it's one of the main questions. Uh, you know, you have 15,000 people in your Assembly that, that is able to go in and, from Riverdale, but everywhere else, I, I went canvassing last two weekends, they didn't even know there was a primary going on. They didn't know that, that, that their councilman was leaving and that you three were running. And these were in sm, very poor neighborhoods, middle neighborhoods, people that are working 40, 50, 60 hours a week, you know, minimum wage. They can't afford it. They don't have time to participate, but I tell them, you better make time or you'll never see change.
If you don't think.
If you don't think.
If you don't think your education is the key to your future, think.
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 Think. Studies have shown that a college education gives you a competitive advantage in today's job market.
Without it, your job opportunities are severely limited. Visit your local colleges, learn about financial aid, and make sure you're prepared for the next step in your journey.
Your education is the key to your future.
Don't give up on birth control either. There are more methods than you think. Find yours at bedsider.org.
I work a lot. I come home tired. You do miss a lot. He dropped off for a whole month. Sometimes I would talk to him and he wouldn't even turn around and look at me. I would just get frustrated because in any way that I talked to him, it just doesn't go through his head. I didn't give up, because there's always hope that they'll snap out of it.
Give your team the boost they need to graduate. Call 1-877-4-A-KID or join us at boostup.org for tips and advice.
Mr. Cohen, you want to answer his question?
Uh, I certainly do. Uh, just, uh, as a city council member, uh, I cannot offer people a pathway to citizenship, but I think as a nation, uh, we cannot continue to have 11 million people criminalized as illegal immigrants, and we need to offer them a pathway to citizenship, so I strongly support that. Um, thank you. It is an incredibly diverse district, uh, in every sense of the word of diversity, uh, and it's been amazing to, like I said, travel from corner to corner, uh, meeting as many people as I can. Uh, and one of the people who has been helping me is Councilman Copel, who's here tonight. Uh, and we've had many conversations about how city council funds have been allocated in the 11th Council District, and he has made every effort to see, uh, that, uh, council funds are allocated fairly and also based on need, and that is a tradition I will continue to uphold. Thank you.
Next question, please. I'm going to go over on this side. This gentleman right here, if you'll stand. May I ask your question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm Cero Garino, Norwood against graffiti. Uh, my question's for all three. Uh, I've been a foster father with my wife, Heather, and I want to know what can be done to help these teenage gentlemen that are under the age of 21 that need to be prepared? These boys are not prepared for life. When they age out, then most of them are sent to a shelter. They are clueless with any education and any way how life works outside of their own realm of growing up. They need to extend programs for them up until the age of 25 or 28. These, these gentlemen are really the future, and they're already having children of their own. What can you, what do you have, what, what would you do about this problem?
We'll start off with Ms. Keeling on that one.
Uh, the, the system, uh, the foster care system, it is, it, it's a good system, but it's a broken system. I think that within the system itself, we need to be able to offer more programs. They need more resources, and we should have more relaxed rules about whether, about who can adopt and who can become foster parents. Yes, we still need background checks, but I think that we need a better system in place, a better vehicle to train. We need training programs, educational programs, and we need the children that are in foster care to, again, be integrated into our system. We do not need to continue to give the same things just longer. So if you don't graduate high school, they put you in a high school that is for older children. I've seen that happen. There's high schools for children that are 19 and over. So I, this is something that we need to fix, and, uh, the council is a place to start.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton.
Uh, Cero, were you aware that, uh, one-third of the residents of Kingsbridge are living in a state of poverty? We're not talking about the 9th Ward of New Orleans here. We're talking about our own backyard. By the time, um, Inspector Dowling slaps cuffs on, um, on a young man, um, we've already lost them. Um, I think it's imperative that we, um, secure more funding for after-school programs, and, um, I would maintain that I'm the guy to get that done for this district. Um, I have a record of fighting for this district. I often say that, um, I'm not running for Secretary of State here. Very often, this job requires concessions, cajoling, uh, assembling coalitions, compromise, but sometimes it involves respectfully getting in people's faces and demanding the resources that our community needs and deserves, and I think I'm the guy that can get that done for us.
Miss Cohen, would you like to take a crack at that question?
Yes, please. Uh, when I first, uh, started on this campaign, uh, I did not anticipate that foster care would be a, a particularly important or, uh, come up a lot on the campaign trail, but I have found that foster parents are some of the most passionate people in our community. And I, again, I'm surprised at how many foster parents I meet and talk to me about, uh, changes that they think that the foster care system needs. Uh, I talked about, you know, my experience in the court system. Uh, we can't be criminalizing our young people. That is not setting them on a path to success. That is setting them on a path to, to the penitentiary, and we need to do something about that. Uh, before I was the Chair of the Aging Committee, I was the Chair of the Youth Committee on, on my community board, uh, and I worked closely with Councilman Copel to advocate for additional funding for youth programs, and I, I understand recently he was actually able to procure more funds, uh, for some youth programs, so. come from four years old to nine, 10 years old. Now, nobody wants to take responsibility. Nobody's doing nothing for the kids who are getting sick, for the teachers and the mothers to deliver kids to are sick. I want to know what you can do to help these families and find the responsible for this. Find who let this school get open in a factory to was handling this kind of poison, and who is going to lose his job or her job for letting this happen? Because I am 100% sure if this happened in Upper West Side Manhattan, the mayor will be there. So, that is my question. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen, you understand?
Uh, thank you.
Do you mean me or him?
I'm looking at Mr. Cohen.
Uh, this really is, uh, an outrageous situation. Uh, that school was opened, I believe, in 1993, so I don't know if anybody's going to lose their job over it. But what's really appropriate is medical monitoring. We don't know what has happened or what may happen, uh, to students and faculty who have been exposed at that school. Uh, I don't want to say I'm the only candidate, but I have called, uh, on the Chancellor to provide reasonable medical monitoring. The New York City school system placed these children in danger, and I think at the very least, uh, it is our obligation to, uh, ensure that if they were harmed, that that harm is minimized. And the only way to do that is through, uh, uh, medical monitoring. And it's, like I said, I've already reached out to the Chancellor, uh, and I will continue to advocate for that.
Thank you. Ms. Keeling?
Well, that is one problem. Um, in that school, there are many similar problems besides this. There's asbestos. There's still 400 schools that burn number six oil. This is oil that, uh, produces most of the, uh, emissions, the, uh, emissions that are harmful to health, that help to cause asthma. These, uh, the state has mandated that buildings that burn number six oil, that they have to change their boilers and their burners. Yet, there are still 400 schools that burn this oil. We need to do better. We need to, again, we have to make the demands on our elected officials to do more. We cannot, as you are here, I'm glad you're here, but you, again, you have to, it's organized, you have to protest, you have to make your voice known and heard, and, uh, and make the demands. This is why we are here to serve.
Mr. Stanton?
Yeah, just very briefly. Part of the problem at PS 51 is the loophole in the laws when, um, DOE leases a building heretofore, they have not been required to, uh, test the building. Uh, it's only in new, uh, buildings that they, that this is required. Um, clearly, that's something that, uh, needs to be remedied. Um, PS 51 situation is, uh, is insulting to the community. Um, that the Department of Education didn't have the decency to send a representative at a high enough level to answer some of the legitimate questions of the families of PS 51 is a travesty. And, um, as your next councilman, I would make sure that I held not only our elected officials to the fire, but the, the agencies that, um, are involved and need to be present. And I want to, uh, give out a shout-out to the new, uh, Chair of Community Board Seven, who was instrumental, Adeline Walker, in, in putting together that meeting. Um, you know, one of the comments that was made at that meeting was that, um, you know, the UFT has a union, you know, and the teachers are represented here, but who's representing the, uh, who's there? Where's the union for the families of PS 51? And I would maintain that they have a very good union in the form of, uh, Adeline Walker and Councilman Copel.
Thank you very much. All righty. Two more questions. It is not going to be you, Mr. Copel. It's going to be you. Then, it's going to be you, and then the lady, and that'll be it. Let's go.
Hi, my name is Fernando Torado, and I want to address the question to everyone here. And it's a different type of loophole, and that's, uh, the locally undesirable land uses. Uh, land uses like the boondangle at Croton Filtration Plan. Uh, the issue with concentrating three homeless shelters within a one-block radius in Woodlawn, all, dumping a lot of services on poorer communities that are already overburdened, uh, and forcing them to have no voice. How are you going to address these locally undesirable land uses, and how are you going to stand up for the community?
Ms. Keeling, please.
Land use is, uh, generally a function of, um, the, the, the community boards. Uh, we have to participate in, in, on those community boards. We, I can't say it enough. We have to make our voices heard. We cannot stay home on September 10th and then complain on September 11th. Land use with regards to not just the, the Croton system, uh, land use with regards to affordable housing, land use with regards to the, um, the shelters that you were referring to. Who voted for that anyway? Uh, how is it that, who, who is responsible? Who's going to raise their hand and say, "I did this"? Um, we have to be more active in our own communities and, uh, that, don't wait until after the fact. It's those, uh, one is, um, going to be put there as a result of the, um, it was the Army Reserve Center that has left. The other is, is being built, and then there's a third one coming up. Uh, it's, it, it shouldn't happen, and it should not, we should not have a colony of homelessness in one community.
Thank you, Ms. Keeling. Mr. Cohen?
Uh, thank you. Um, many of these, uh, proposed shelters are actually in the Wakefield section of the Bronx, although Woodlawn has been, uh, very vocal in their opposition. Uh, the mayor's position on the Mueller Center is just unreasonable, and, uh, it presents such a terrible burden. Uh, the Mueller Center is proposed to have, uh, 200 single homeless men, uh, across the street from another, uh, homeless shelter. Uh, it's, it is unfair, it is a ridiculous burden to place on this community. Uh, our elected officials have been active in, in opposition to that. Uh, I will not support a candidate for mayor who doesn't, uh, will not attempt to undo uh, what this current administration is doing regarding the Mueller, uh, Center. As Shili said, I've actually served on the community board, uh, on the land use committee. Uh, I'm aware of what it takes. We've done a lot of downside, downzoning in, uh, community, in, uh, the City Council District, uh, and I'm going to make sure that those laws are enforced. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stanton, please.
Um, a few years ago, um, I live in Van Cortlandt Village. A few years ago, a supportive housing development was, um, proposed on, on my block, and, um, I was one of the leading community activists that came out in opposition, uh, to it. It was completely inappropriate for our community, I think. Um, and we were victorious. Um, I've heard it said, um, I've heard, uh, my opponent, uh, Mr. Cohen, say that he is opposed to, um, inappropriate development. I don't know anybody who's in favor of inappropriate development, but, um, I, I would like to point out that, um, Mr. Cohen accepted a, uh, a contribution from a gentleman who, uh, run, Daniel Rheingold, who runs the Hebrew Home in Riverdale. And you're talking about, um, inappropriate development, something that would, uh, be an eyesore and, and, uh, be another obstacle, man-made obstacle between, uh, Riverdale and the Hudson River. Um, I, uh, I do hope that, uh, Mr. Cohen is sincere when he says that, um, that would have no influence on his vote in City Council. I don't think you have anything to worry about with me. Anything that is inappropriate, um, will not, will get past, get past me. I was at the Woodlawn Taxpayers Association meeting when, um, people, uh, one of the, the concerns that was voiced there was, um, wow, I can't imagine if something like this were proposed in Riverdale. If it's inappropriate, I will oppose it in Riverdale. I'll oppose it in Kingsbridge. I'll oppose it in Woodlawn.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. You had a question, madam? No, no, well, doesn't matter. The lady first, and then we'll do the gentleman. And you will be the last one. You want to ask a question? And I'm going to have Mr. Copel ask a question too, okay? So, we have, you want to ask a question too? You know we're on a time limit, right, people? All righty. So, we're going to go ahead. Ask your question.
Okay, this is for Mr. Stanton. As a Spanish speaker, I was not clear with your response regarding the immigration question. The gentleman in the back asked about your opinion on the immigration question, and you responded with the Dream Act, and that's a different matter. I want to clarify your opinion.
Um, again, I think, um, I'm not necessarily clear on, um, how this necessarily pertains to a City Council race, but let me try to answer that a little bit better. Look, uh, this country was founded on very fundamental, uh, ideals, uh, that we are an open society, we are open, uh, we, we have, it's been a source of pride for our country and the city in particular. And, um, we have been welcoming in our community, in our communities, as it was pointed out, we are a very diverse district. And, um, I would welcome all who come here, and I would try to strive to make this with the help of our communities, to create an environment where everyone wants to come. Immigrants, people in Manhattan, I believe we have it within ourselves to create a community that can be a, a place where other communities take a look and say, hey, you need to see what's going on up in the Northwest Bronx. I don't know how they're doing, what they're doing, but we need to go see it. And I think we've got the raw materials to make that happen, and I want to lead that charge.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Sir, go right ahead.
Hi, um, I, this question is for Ms. Keeling. Uh, just wanted to, uh, push back on something that you said earlier. I think you communicated that Riverdale's higher voting rates, um, gives them greater entitlement to services. Um, and our current councilman has a office in our neighborhood in the Norwood area. Uh, Assembly Mandenowit, um, has put forth, uh, proposals in the Norwood area. Our board president has launched initiatives in our area. And so, I just want to make sure that that's what you're communicating, because I think as a resident of Norwood and as Bedford Park, it's a little offensive, um, to think that because we have lower voting rates, that we will not, that we will not receive the same services. So, just wanted to clarify that.
Let me answer that for you real quick. Who do you see here? Who do you see here?
I, I'm a resident, and I'm here.
Right.
Right.
But the thing about it is, our participation is so low. We don't have you and me, hundreds of more here. Why is it that we don't have more people here?
And I'm not, and I'm not, and I'm not saying that that's not true, that there not, there's not enough engagement. In an ideal world, that would be awesome.
No, no, no.
If we did have, no, can, I, I'll let you speak.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That would be great if we did. But you're now saying that because we don't vote at a certain rate, so what's the threshold? If we don't vote, so then we don't get the services?
The threshold is 100%. 100% participation. If we don't have 100% participation in every community, we're done. But go ahead, Ms. Keeling.
Okay. Is your, your, hold on, please. Your question is, and let me get this right, whether or not my position was that they were entitled to more because they voted more. Is that what you were asking me?
Yep.
No, that my, uh, no, that is not my position. They are not entitled to more. But what I'm saying is that your vote is your voice. If you want that voice heard, you have to get out and vote. How, you know how many times I've heard people say, oh, well, they don't vote over there anyway? You have to do better, and it's not just, you're in Norwood. Norwood probably has the second highest rate after the Riverdale section. That, there's Wakefield, there's Bedford Park, there's University Heights. No, you, when you don't vote, you don't have a voice. So, my position is, don't complain. Just, just go and vote, because this is the way that you make yourself heard. And if you think that they're getting more because they are voting more, I'm not surprised by that. If, but you, if you're saying that everybody's getting everything and it's all equal, then life is beautiful, and that's great.
But that's, that's not what I'm, that, that's not what I'm saying.
Well, what did you say?
I'm just, I point, I gave you three examples of elected officials who have, um, you know, started initiatives and pay attention to districts that don't have the same, uh, voter rates. And so, I just, I think you clarified your position, though, too.
Okay, but there are seven different commu-, okay, you know it.
Gentleman right here in the yellow shirt, please.
Thank you. I'd like to hear from all three candidates on something positive. I think one of the best things that, uh, the City, the City Council or the administration has done in the past decade is to institute the, uh, letter grade system for eating establishments. Uh, I, I think that, uh, it's great that they've all got to display their ABC or pending from, uh, the private clubs and the Four Seasons down at the Hello Deli and the hole-in-the-wall falafel places. Uh, it's great for us, and it's great for the city in, uh, continuing to attract tourists. Uh, I think that, uh, extending that system or one like it to the places that don't have four walls, uh, would be equally beneficial. Uh, if the, uh, the people who are selling, uh, platters of chicken and rice and, uh, roasted nuts and falafels and stuff from carts, if, uh, if they had the same thing, uh, I think it would be helpful to us. I've seen things that I've wondered about, uh, no caps to cover hairs, no gloves. Uh, I've heard the stories and seen the pictures in the Daily News about, uh, vendors who were cooking hot dogs in water that they took out of public toilets. Uh, I, I think that we really could use, a wider use of this wonderful system.
That's crazy.
I, I'd like to, I'd like to hear from all three candidates on that.
I'm not eating another hot dog. I'll leave that to you, Ms. Keeling.
No, he's a, he's a small business.
Can I take a first crack at this? Um, for those of you who don't know, it's, I suspect that it, that question was aimed at me. Um, I'm, uh, I'm an interesting, I'm in an interesting profession. Um, was that, that was supposed to be a positive note that we were going to end it on? Um, I think, I think that, uh, the letter grade system is actually, um, terribly arbitrary, and, um, I, I know because I'm in this industry, that what it takes, uh, to get the difference between an A and a B and an A and a C can be the difference between one fly that enters, uh, an establishment or not. The, the, the real issue at heart here is, um, we are over-regulated. We need, if we want to make this community everything it can be, and the city everything it can be, we need to be able to maintain and attract new businesses and allow them to grow and flourish. We've got, um, city agencies that are so aggressive in their, um, in their approach and their, uh, stance towards small businesses that, um, I know, it, it's very difficult to do business in the city and succeed. Um, and we need, um, we need to put in place, um, we need to create an environment where our city government is, uh, is in a better position to help small businesses and give them the tools that they need to succeed in our city. And I think we will have gone a long way if we, uh, if we do that in, in creating the, the kind of structures that we need in the city. Okay, all right. There is no offense.
Ms. Keeling?
Okay, I've been a small businesswoman for 34 years. Uh, when, after I graduated law school, I went to clerk at the State Supreme Court of New York. I felt that I was, um, ineffective to make the kind of change that I'd like to make, so I left. I bought, um, a, a building, actually. This was back in, uh, 1988, when you could buy a 20-unit building in, uh, on the Lower East Side for $225,000. Um, after buying that building, uh, I noticed, I stayed through, in the Lower East Side, through all the drugs and the crime and everything, and then the city came along and gave tax incentives to new businesses, to new buildings, the, um, the tax credit programs. So, there I was, I was, you know, had been through all the hard times, but these buildings could come and put hardwood floors and, and granite countertops, and then I was left After buying that building, uh, I noticed, I stayed through, in the Lower East Side, through all the drugs and the crime and everything. And then the city came along and gave tax incentives to new businesses, to new buildings, the, um, the tax credit programs. So there I was, I was, you know, had been through all the hard times, but these buildings could come and put hardwood floors and, and granite countertops, and then I was left to compete with them. So it's two parts. One, we do not take care of the businesses that we have in our communities. We should do that. Because the, small businesses, they are the backbone of our communities. They stabilize us. And we need to take care of the ones that are there. And yes, we do need to be able to attract new businesses, but we are absolutely over-regulated. So my, I would want some sound regulation, but I would also want some sound deregulation.
Thank you, Ms. Keeling. Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. Uh, I think the letter grade system is great. I, I really, I look for the letter grades. A restaurant that doesn't have an A really gives me pause. I think recently in the city council's been proposed some sensible legislation to modify the program a little bit, to make it a little less onerous on business. I think in the big picture, uh, I really believe in progressive income tax. I think the city should be funded by the wealthiest people paying their fair share. And I don't think we should fund the city through fines. And I think that that has been a thrust of a lot of the city's policies, particularly to outer borough businesses. Uh, and I think that with the new administration and a new council member, we have an opportunity to make, uh, the district more friendly to business and to make it safer. So I appreciate the question, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. One more question. Madam?
Um, Mr. Cohen, did you work for Pedro G. Espada? And if so, when and in what capacity?
Uh, I did. Uh, I worked for Pedro, the son of Senator Espada, in 1999 and 2000. Uh, I worked in the South Bronx. I am particularly proud of the work I did in the South Bronx. Uh, I'm still well-regarded for that work. I recently ran into, uh, Senator Marco Serrano, and we talked about, uh, people still mention me down there. So, uh, I'm very proud of that work. Thank you.
What was your title?
I was council.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Sure, I mean, I mean, the press has been here. If you, I can take a couple of press questions. Hey, Norwood is here. Who else is here? Because no one came to me. You didn't introduce yourself as a newspaper, did you?
I'm wearing my press bag.
I am, I am not even paying attention. I'm so sorry. I did say, "Come and ask a question now." Ask a question.
My name is Robert Press from the Bronx News. To all three of you, what do you think of a school that expands into a area that used to be a garage, has no music, no art, no gym, no cafeteria, and no auditorium? Would you send your child there?
Ms. Keeling?
No, I would not. Uh, and it, part of the problem with, um, which, part of the problem with charter schools many times is that they are permitted to open without, uh, lunchrooms or gymnasiums. I am the person who constantly argues for art, music, dance, and physical education to be returned to the schools. I think that this is the way that children learn to focus. How often have we said to our children, "You have to focus." But then where do you learn to focus? I'll tell you where you learn to focus. You focus when you get on that start line and you have to go 100 meters. You are focused. You, you are, you learn competi-, competition. You learn how to accept healthy defeat. So, no, to, to answer your question, I would not send my child there. How does it happen? Ask the folks that voted yes on that.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. You know, I just want to say regarding the last question, I don't know if I'm the only candidate, but I worked very hard to, with Senator Gustavo Rivera to defeat Senator Espada. And I think that's why, part of the reason why I earned Senator Gustavo Rivera's endorsement. Uh, I think Mr. Press is talking about the charter school that Mr. Stanton has been referring to. Uh, and I am aware that there are a lot of challenges faced by that school. Um, I, I know, uh, you know, we...
Would you send your child there?
Uh, I, I've never been to the school, so I really couldn't say.
Okay, Mr. Stanton?
I did not send my child there. I am a board member, or I was a board member of the Tech International School. Um, as I indicated, I recruited it to the, uh, community because our, the parents of our community were demanding it, something like that. Um, it is not unusual for a school to experience some growing pains in the first year of operation. But I would do it again in a heartbeat. Um, I had many parents come up to me, thank me personally for my involvement in bringing the school to the community. And, and they thanked God that they had a seat there because their options were just way too thin. And I think this is a school that, uh, if given a chance, will improve over time. And, um, I do not think, uh, that's necessarily a fair characterization of, um, of the school. It's a great place, and the students are very proud to be there.
Thank you, Mr. Stanton. Are there any other press here that would like to ask a question? No? Mr. Copel? I have been asking you all to raise hands. What you got?
I got a question.
Tell me. This will not be... Really? I was out there all day Saturday and Sunday last week, between Norwood, Williams Bridge, and Woodhaven. But, but, but we'll talk about that. What's your question? What's your question?
So Bedford Park North residents who are not getting any help with parks, even though they're still in, they're still within the same boundary, are getting very upset, and yes, are starting to feel that maybe one side of our community is being more represented than the other. And I, again, take very offense to the fact that just because some district has a larger number than us, that they should therefore be represented and we shouldn't. That's how I treat that, Ms. Keeling. So I apologize if I misunderstood, but I seem I wasn't the only one that misunderstood. But the question remains, we have neighborhoods that are not being fully represented. Parks is one area, affordable housing is the other. I thought to all three candidates, how do we represent?
Well, do you understand now, Anthony? Do, do you understand now? Did I make myself clear when I answered him?
Actually, you didn't, but you answered my question, Anthony.
Okay, so your question is, what's your question? It's my understanding that the Parks Department does not have its own budget. That's one thing. So if, and I, the question of whether or not people get services that do not vote, then that, I don't have that answer. If you're not, if you feel that you are not getting services, then I think that's a question for your present elected officials. It is not a question for me. I, what I stated was that if, your vote is your voice. It does not matter what district that you come, you come from. Every, every man has one vote. We have, this council district has four assembly districts in it. Seventy-eight, eighty, eighty-one, and eighty-three. The vote, the voting is very different from those four assembly districts. So you should probably take a look at that. But if you feel that you are not being adequately represented or you do not, are not getting adequate funds, then I think you should speak to the people who are presently in power.
Thank you, Ms. Keeling. That is, uh, quite enough there. Mr. Cohen?
Uh, well, first let me say, uh, Mr. Serrano, I'm not sure it's 100% appropriate to be taking questions from people being paid by the Stanton campaign.
Yeah, that's true.
But, that being said, uh, the city parks budget is about four-tenth of one percent of the city budget. Uh, I serve on the board of the Friends of Ann Cortlandt Park. Uh, I think that our, our parks deserve better, and I think that we can do better. And if elected, I'm going to try to make sure that we have more funds for parks.
Thank you. Mr. Stanton, you want to answer there?
Am I allowed to answer somebody who works for me?
Whatever you think is appropriate.
I'm going to answer, Anthony. Um, I was, um, part of a walk-through at, um, at the Oval Park a few months ago, and, um, I took notice of the fact that it seemed that, like, half of the park had been freshly mowed and half of it looked like, uh, an Amazon jungle. So I asked the administrator there, the park administrator, um, what's the story? He said, "Well, we only have one lawnmower." I said, "For the park?" He said, "No, for the entire district." So clearly, uh, we are not giving the Parks Department the tools that they need to, uh, keep our parks in the condition that we rightfully should expect. That's really all I have to say on that.
You worked that out well together.
I want to thank everyone very much for coming. I'm going to take one last question, and I'm going to let Mr. Copel ask it.
Hi, I'm Ruben Diaz Jr. I'm not just the Bronx Borough President, but I'm a father and an uncle. I can't emphasize enough how important it is for men and fathers to be a part of their children's lives. Let me talk to you about a program that's come out of my office, the Bronx Fathers Taking Action Committee, which is a committee of Bronx fathers and men formed to help uplift the institution of fatherhood while responsibly respecting the privilege of being a dad. Our mission statement is to engage, empower, educate, and encourage fathers, grandfathers, and uncles of all ages by providing them with the resources and help that they need in order to build new relationships with the leaders in our community. Ultimately, this initiative will help reinforce Bronx men as positive role models. So I just want to take the time out to encourage fathers, grandfathers, uncles, men of all corners of the Bronx, to take an important role in the lives of the children in your families and in our community, and also to get involved in this uplifting committee.
Good job, Theo.
Thank you.
Let's start it again, Theo.
All right.
Okay, have a nice day.
You, too.
Thanks.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call us. Trust your instincts.
The Bronx, the borough of 1.4 million people who come from all over the world with an expanse of cultures that enhance New York's all-America city. And BronxNet Community Television is there, informing, educating, enriching, providing your voice, your views, your vision. BronxNet, on channels 67, 68, 69, and 70 in the Bronx, or on the web at www.bronxnet.org.
I'd be happy to talk to anybody here about allocation of resources between different parts of the 11th Council District that I've represented for the past 11 and a half years. I appreciate what this gentleman had to say. I will talk to him, I'm not going to debate it. I want to know from these candidates, however, although Mr. Cohen didn't really say it, I want you to give me one example, one example of where Riverdale, in any category, has gotten preference over other parts of the district, in the schools, in the parks, in the transportation resources? I want you to give me one example where Riverdale has benefited. Pitting one community here against the other is not the way, in my opinion, to win an election.
Mr. Copel, I'm sorry if I offended your sensibilities. Whether you want to admit it or not, there is a perceptible feeling in this room and in the district that Riverdale gets more than other parts of the district. I never said that you have distributed it in an unfair manner, but there is, you asked the question I'm answering. There, there is a perception that we cannot ignore. And, you know, I'm sorry if it offended your sensibilities, but I have never accused you personally of favoring one community over the other. But there is a feeling in this room and in these communities that they are getting the short end of it. I'm sorry if that offends you.
Ms. Keeling?
Uh, my example would be the park at the 231st Street. I think that's Ewing Park, uh, where they got one, it was proposed, $1 million. You proposed it. It was proposed at a Parks and Recreation meeting. You, Mr. Sandler, from your office came and offered one, more than $1 million to repave the courts, the basketball courts in that park. This is a park that, you cannot walk into this park without the fresh smell of marijuana. This is not something that people want done. But $1 million was being allocated there and also to put a dog run and a toddler park. Uh, another example would be the church, um, where Minister Delgado is. That is the Church of the Mediator. That is on 231st Street in Kingsbridge. He requested $15,000 for an ESL program because he has a very large immigrant population. He sat down with you, and you explained to him exactly why he could not have that, and you adequately explained where the money went in the other parts of the district, which was the reason that was told to him, I am told, this is secondhand, that he was not able to get the money for the ESL program. And those are my examples since you asked.
Mr. Cohen?
Uh, like I said, I believe that that is, it's just not true. Uh, and I, like I said, I've spent a lot of time with Councilman Copel. I am intimately aware of how he's allocated his funds, and he has bent over backward to make sure that city council funds go to the neediest part of the district. It's a record he should be very proud of.
Hi, I'm Ruben Diaz Jr. I'm not just the Bronx Borough President, but I'm a father and an uncle. I can't emphasize enough how important it is for men and fathers to be a part of their children's lives. Let me talk to you about a program that's come out of my office, the Bronx Fathers Taking Action Committee, which is a committee of Bronx fathers and men formed to help uplift the institution of fatherhood while responsibly respecting the privilege of being a dad. Our mission statement is to engage, empower, educate, and encourage fathers, grandfathers, and uncles of all ages by providing them with the resources and help that they need in order to build new relationships with the leaders in our community. Ultimately, this initiative will help reinforce Bronx men as positive role models. So I just want to take the time out to encourage fathers, grandfathers, uncles, men of all corners of the Bronx, to take an important role in the lives of the children in your families and in our community, and also to get involved in this uplifting committee.
Good job, Theo.
Thank you.
Let's start it again, Theo.
All right.
How you doing? I just want a regular, no sugar today.
You got it.
Thanks. Hello.
Hi.
Did you eat that whole thing today?
Yeah.
Yes. Hi, how are you doing? She's getting big, huh?
Yeah, she is big. Oh, your haircut. Yeah, yeah, looks cute. Come on, let's go. Nice to see you. Thanks a lot.
If only child abuse were this easy to recognize. If you even suspect abuse, call 1-800-for-a-child. All calls are anonymous and confidential. Trust your instincts. Trust your instincts.
Megan, you're a tramp. Ryan Fitch told me you guys made out. Everybody knows. He says you're the most desperate girl he knows, besides your mom. How many boyfriends does she have, anyway? Lots? That zit is huge. Zip face.
Cocina a la temperatura adecuada usando un termómetro para alimentos. Este año, tres mil personas en Estados Unidos morirán por comer alimentos contaminados.
If you don't think-
If you don't think-
If you don't think your education is the key to your future, think.
Think.
Tink.
Think. Studies have shown that a college education gives you a competitive advantage in today's job market.
Without it, your job opportunities are severely limited. Visit your local colleges, learn about financial aid, and make sure you're prepared for the next step in your journey.
Your education is the key to your future.
I want to thank everyone, everyone. I want the candidates now to take the next three minutes to explain to themselves why they need it, and then we're out of here, okay? Then we're out of here. I'm going to start off with Mr. Stanton.
Michael, thank you again for, and to Lehman for hosting this event. I would maintain that this election, in many ways, is more important than who you selected for president. This is about how your community is going to look, smell, and feel. Okay? In 2012, when I went to the polls, I looked at the ballot, and it occurred to me as I went down that we have certain expectations of our president. We want somebody who's got vision, somebody who really can articulate a path towards where he wants to take our country, he or she. And as you go down the ballot, from Senate, Congress, State Assembly, to City Council, it seems that our expectations just keep on getting ratcheted down to the point where all we expect in a local elected official is that they show up and fill a pothole. I don't mean to disrespect you, Councilman Copel. I admire the work that you've done in our, in our community. But with all due respect, I think that we need somebody here who can bring something more to the table, who's got a record of having accomplished things, who can get things done, who has the respect and, and confidence of many of the young families in our community, who has done things for seniors in our community. And I want this place, when you see me on the street two years from now, three years from now, I'd like you to challenge me because I'm going to challenge you. I'd like you to ask me, what have you done to help the neediest in our community? What have you done to expand educational options for our families? What have you done to make this a more attractive place for business? I'll be able to answer those questions for you. Nothing would give me more pride than to walk down a street with somebody and have them point to somebody, something that we accomplished as a community and say, "Isn't that cool? That was my neighbor's idea. We just helped him make it happen." And this is what I want to bring to this race. This is what, the conversation I think we need to be having. I want people in this room to start asking questions. Who do you have confidence in to make, bring about some of the changes that we need here? Who do you have confidence in who will represent you and fight for your interests? I think it's a pretty simple answer. Thank you, and God bless everybody.
Ms. Keeling?
I think it's interesting that I would be accused of, or it would be said that, communities would be pit. I would be pitting communities against each other. I came to a table that was already set. I do not have the capacity nor the desire to commit to pit communities against each other. As a matter of fact, I think that of all the candidates, I am a person who can most relate to the many diverse communities and the people that live in the various communities across this district. Si yo hablo español, pero yo lo aprendí en la escuela. I speak Spanish, but I learned Spanish in school because I chose to do that. When I walk down the street and I see single parents and I talk to single parents, I understand what that means. I understand what it is to be in a family where both, two brothers were murdered, that, that it was drug-related. I understand what it is to have the father of a son that comes home from a war and he suffers from the post, from post-traumatic stress syndrome. I understand these things. These are experiences I've had. I live in Riverdale. I am very proud. I have lived there over 25 years. My mother's there, my son is there. So that is why I think I can bring communities together because I have more in common with more people and more attitudes than my other opponents. Thank you.
Mr. Cohen?
Thank you. I'll be brief. I know it's getting very late. First, again, I want to say thank you to Michael for all the hard work that you've done to bring this together. And thank you to all of you. I don't think anybody's left, and I appreciate that. I really also want to say that I'm particularly proud of the campaign I've been running so far. I have a positive vision for this district. I assume that all of you have a positive vision of this district. That's why you live here and you call it home. I have been bringing people together. I have been working with people, and I know that I can bring that to the city council. I know bringing that to the city council will make me an effective council member, one who can actually work with people and get things done. And that's why I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
I want to thank you all for this evening. I really do. My name is Michael Serrano. I'm with Dialogue, a campus forum. The radio station has played on Lehman College. I did this because these three people really brought me back to politics, made me want to think about what I wanted to do in this community. And I also want to tell, the reason why there's this disparities between different communities regarding the voting is because so many more people are struggling out there and they just don't have the time. We need to make the time to make our voices heard across the board, from this little district to this great nation of ours. It's important that we all work together, try to make change in our community for the betterment, for the next generation. And then from there, I can retire and say I did what I was supposed to do. I want to thank you all very much. I appreciate you taking your time, coming tonight. God bless you. God bless America. Good night.